Five thirty-one. So I'd like to do a call to order and roll call, please.
I know who this is.
Perfect. Sounds good. And then I'd like to officially welcome Latoya Allen and Marilyn Mancini for joining. Thank you for committing your valuable time and resources and energy to our homeless committee. Would either of you like to share anything with us tonight before we get started?
I'd just like to say that's what happens.
And I hope to be able to serve and be a vital part of the committee.
Perfect, welcome, thank you. My name is Jessica, Jessica Hare.
I'm Alex Tandy, nice to meet you and I'm super excited that you're both joining the committee.
Kenneth Murray, welcome.
I know that, I know Alex wasn't here yes, or last meeting, but Pastor Murray on the review of agenda, do either of you have a chance to review that? The last meeting, I think it was back in November.
It should be in the second half of February.
Yes.
But you just have a, do you have a sheet?
I just have a sheet.
I don't.
But, uh... Make a motion to accept the agenda.
Perfect, thank you. At this point, I think we'd like to open it up to public comment if anybody has anything to talk about.
My name's Dennis Volko, Mouse Market Seaside. I got, I was watching city council meetings and it's been, I don't know exactly how it was proposed, but there's been a proposed, or something asked of Seaside to put a homeless shelter on the corner of Broadway and Nocht Buena. And I just feel like things have been decided with the city council before that really wasn't discussed publicly too much. So I'm just asking this committee if they have any plans of, I know Dave Pacheco and Mr. Wizard's gonna have a meeting at the Old Meyer Center, but not too many people know about it. And Dave was just saying that, you know, this is kind of gonna be a thing he wants people to know about and give some opinions about, but it'd be kind of a rushed thing. And I just don't believe it should be a rushed thing. And I hope this is a committee, I don't know if you're in charge of it, but the people on the backside of Olympia and all of the businesses up and down Broadway and the people on Palm Avenue should be aware of the meetings that Dave and anybody else is gonna have because you can't get input from the citizens unless they know about it. And Jane Parker was on the TV saying that the county was proposing this to be in the county building with the hopes of other cities helping us out. And in the past, not too many other cities have helped us out. So I just would like to state that fact.
Richard Avila, lived on Muscal Street, Seaside for a long, long time. I'd like to give you some history since you people are younger. In the fifties, in the sixties, in the seventies, in Seaside, Fort Ord was here, you could line up, there was on Broadway prostitutes on Nocht Buena and Broadway was the pit area, you could buy anything you wanted. So then Fort Ord leaves, things get start cleaned up. When I first used to come up here, my folk, my grandparents were up here in the forties, there was no houses up there. Well, when I come here in the fifties, we built a bunch of houses up on the top of the hill. Bingo Street wasn't even paved yet when I started my business or worked in the construction. So anyhow, you had the pit area there. And then, and then Fort Ord left and now you guys wanna start bringing in all the homeless, everything else around to drive Seaside values down more. And it's really not fair. I know people come, have passed away now, it's been so long, when they lived in Monterey, they weren't even allowed to come to Seaside. I remember when there's a house shack here, shack there, shack here and everything else on the thing over by where Home Depot is, there was shacks over there people were living. So you came in in a late time, but now it seems like everything wants, now you wanna make, you, you, you got, well, it's not drugs anymore, it's cannabis. You got the cannabis capital of the, of the Monterey Peninsula. Now you wanna make the homeless capital of the Monterey Peninsula. And I think it's time to keep this thing going clean and the right way and stop driving property down. You got, that's the wrong place for it. You'll have everybody around here coming around here and all you'll be was junk. And our taxes will go up so we can clean up the junk that's here. And it's not really fair.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Bob Constant and first time here, but I have an interest in the homeless issue because it's an issue like a bag of worms. You don't know which, which one to pull on first, which one to deal with. But the other evening at Councilman Pacheco's meeting, I heard about the, the meeting in February and it raised a red flag because initially during the presentation, there wasn't a mention of this committee's participation in that meeting. And we have a new council and, and everybody's trying to do the very best. And I would encourage y'all to, to stay on the top of the game and make sure that whatever anybody else does in the city, that you are involved ahead of time rather than as an afterthought. And that if, if council members or the council is gonna have a meeting, then you need to be there, right up there with them so that we all move forward and your valuable energies are put to the best use.
Good evening. This is being moved forward by the Monterey County Leadership Group. So I think you need to know that. And it's definitely on a fast track. The state has given this county twelve, this county and San Bernardino County twelve million dollars. I don't wanna go into detail, maybe we can answer questions later on with the chief, but in a nutshell, I'm having a community meeting with Councilman Wizard on February thirteenth, six PM at the Old Meyer Center. We're gonna have some guest speakers, very short speaking. Community input to me and I believe Mr. Wizard are extremely important that night. And this is not in slow motion. In February, I think it's February twenty-fourth or thereabouts, there's going to be, twenty-fifth, there's going to be those that are interested in applying for the grants. That's the day they meet and figure out what's going on. From March thirty-one, March first to March thirty-one, that is the window of the opportunity when they're going to be accepting the grants. And then after that, in April, they have to accept who, April and May, they gotta accept who's gonna be recognized for the grants. So as you can see, the window is narrow, it's very close knit because the, let's just say that I get approved in June, that means I have two years if I'm building a facility to open that facility. It's a two-year window. I mean, you have to be operating and for two years to a new fixture to open and be built and go through all the paperwork is extremely quick. So all the ducks gotta be lined up, everybody's gotta be placed. So I encourage you to come to this meeting. I encourage you to tell your friends about this meeting. I think that's invaluable. And I think it's important if the residents have comments that they wanna share, there's a council meeting on February seventh. I think it's invaluable that they go to that meeting and speak up their for or against it so it gives the council an insight as far as what they do. And the county is, is their land, it's their facility, they may be the ones applying for the grant. And the city will be a partner directly or indirectly, or not at all. But it's not our property either. And it's not our trailer either. And for your information purposes, the Veterans Transition Center is also applying, we assume, pretty confident are applying for a grant as well. And there's probably only, I'm guessing, and I talked to the chief, there may be only two and a half to three million for this area, the peninsula, at probably the most. Because Selena's is gonna get a significant amount of money because they have a plan and so does the Veterans Transition Center. So, you know, you hear ten million, but it's, when it comes down this way, it's not gonna be that. But please come to the meeting. I hope the community comes to the meeting. And I think the input at the council meeting is valuable. And I think we all need to know more, but the turnover is extremely quick because the deadlines set forth by the state.
Jesse Perez, Seaside resident. Regardless of the politics, I want the city or this community to understand, as you probably well do, the homeless issue is not gonna go away. We're gonna have to deal with it whether it be Monterey, Pacific Grove, or Seaside. I would like to see Seaside lead and be willing to facilitate the, the homeless shelter within the city limits of Seaside. But I'm sure you will assure from the other outlining cities that they will make their contribution. But I would like to have Seaside be a city to show the leadership in dealing with this homeless issue and the homeless shelter.
Public comment is still open? Everybody gets their three minutes to share during public comment just the first time. Sir?
Can I, can I talk to the more?
It's only three minutes per person, thank you.
I didn't use up my time. The thing is about this homeless stuff is that about eighty percent of them or so, they're living that life because they want to. They're on drugs, booze, whatever it is. There are some people that need help, yes. But the ones you see walking on the streets and everything, and they're smoking their cigarettes, their face is all red, they're living that life because they want to. That's the truth of it.
Good evening, my name's Bob Oliver. This is first time I've attended your committee meetings. And I was wondering for the, my benefit and anyone else here for the first time, if you could tell us a little about when you were formed and what you're planning on doing.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So the city decided to form the homeless committee, I think about a year ago, but our first meeting was not until March, gentlemen? April, April twenty-sixth of this year. And our, our biggest goal was to advise and recommend, make recommendations to the city council about some funding to help our local organizations throughout the city. We did recommend funds be given to I Help and the Salvation Army for a food truck. And we're still kind of new and getting our legs under, under us a little bit. We have several new committee members. But going forward, I think we'd like to explore options and be a part of the heat funding that's coming down and the shelter that's gonna be coming in. That is really not in our purview currently. Perhaps in another year, if there is a shelter there, that might be something that we will take the lead in some capacity on. Anybody else would like to share? All committees through the city are formed by a selection through either, I believe it's the mayor and the mayor pro tem. I believe two, two city council members, yeah. Yeah, yes.
Does anybody here know that there was a shelter here in Seaside several years ago when I, in the seventies, eighties? Oh, I'm sorry. I have to turn it on. And I don't know if anybody knew of this shelter, but it was here for quite a while. And I don't believe that anybody knew about it if I'm looking out at this audience. And so why we're concerned about a shelter over there in the county building? I think it's a feasible thing to do because I am tired of looking at that lady on the corner with her car. But the one in Seaside was there for many years. It is not there anymore, they've moved it elsewhere, but...
Thank you. Welcome, Molly. All right, so I think we're gonna move forward. We have a business item from...
So we're discussing the work plan. So we first formed, first drafted the work plan, I do want to be, we were first hoping to affect the package, the budget after the work plan. We have something to do. You know, it could be, we're missing something when we're designing the package. We need some, we need some, the actual, the number of projects.
So I know that you, it's available online and I think sometimes you send it to us when you...
I said, we need to...
The link to the...
Would it be helpful if you, if you pointed out, we really do not have that.
Yeah, yeah. I think we have, maybe have a couple copies. I don't know if that every member might need one, but maybe two or three. Yeah. Yeah, okay.
So I guess I'm happy to discuss what...
A very nice picture of everybody. So we'll have to get a new picture. Okay, we had mission statement, which is to plan, advocate, support, and collaborate with those affected by homelessness. A little bit of the background, which might be helpful. Committee was created by the city council in November of two thousand seventeen. Recruitment began for commissioners and the inaugural meeting was April twelfth, two thousand eighteen. We have some general duties of the commission on the status of homelessness, which are review and comment on city ordinances, programs, policies, and state mandates relating to housing, CDBG grants and other programs and other poverty mitigation programs, monitor and assist city progress in implementing needed homeless facilities and services, develop policy recommendations and processes to measure the effectiveness of new and existing policies in ending and preventing homelessness, and coordinate with CDAC for their required reporting in the HUD mandated annual action report. A couple of members did that as well this year. Identify strategic goals for city and estimate resources needed to accomplish these goals, investigate funding to implement programs to benefit the homeless community, identify partnerships with county, city, and other programs that can leverage to achieve the goals of ending, preventing homeless in the city of Seaside. Responsibilities of the commissioners would be to hold public meetings on matters related to homelessness, investigate best and contemporary practices with regard to eliminating and preventing homelessness, serve in advisory capacity to city council, commissions, committees, and boards on related issues, and prepare an annual report to city council on progress and effectiveness of various programs and policies. So that may be, may go hand in hand with developing the new work plan is to come up with our annual report of what was accomplished. And then, so the two thousand eighteen, nineteen work plan to understand the different types of homeless statuses, the different states of homelessness, and the different influencing factors of homelessness, and prioritize the type of homeless service to target. That's number one. Number two, understand the types of organizations that are currently providing services for homelessness in our community and find ways to leverage opportunities. Include service providers and a listing of services that are provided. Also identify if there are designated areas for homeless to sleep. Number three, identify and make recommendation to city council for the expenditure of thirty thousand dollars of budgeted funds from seventeen eighteen and there was also eighteen nineteen. And then seek ways to conduct a direct survey of those that are homeless and to collaborate with others that may already have that data. So those were the four items on the, the work plan. I guess amongst yourself, you could discuss...
Thank you.
What's been accomplished and...
So going forward, our accomplishments would certainly be the funds that we provided and designated to I Help and Salvation Army. We do, I believe, have ten thousand left. Is it possible and maybe having at our next meeting, follow-up of that money and how, if it ever was distributed and, and the results of that? Would anybody else like to add to our accomplishments?
I think part of the accomplishment of the previous year was getting to know the committee members and everyone's priorities and how these kinds of committees are organized and execute their, their functions. So I think part of the year was just spent getting to know how to, how to do what we need to do.
And perhaps getting... And perhaps getting into the general duties of the homeless committee, I would, I'm not sure if it's more loosely in here, but I know that we presented to the city council when we were making our recommendations that we have based our recommendations on Housing First Policy, and that we, going forward, continue to support and recommend enhanced policies with the Housing First Policy being a priority. And in fact, I don't know if we want to get specific, but maybe having a discussion and an action item putting on the agenda for next time about recommending that the city council adopt that policy a little bit more firmly. Have a discussion about that, and maybe a presentation about Housing First and kind of what that meant. And picking apart the general duties of the homeless committee, I know that we had a meeting with CDAC that was more of a community meeting that Natalia and I were able to attend. But going forward, maybe having more collaboration with them. Having more community input about what they want to see some of these funds put towards, what kind of services they want to see enhanced. And I know CDAC does a really good job of, at least the meeting I attended. Does anybody else have anything? And kind of the, maybe within the responsibility piece, having the serve in advisory capacity, we can, in part of that, maybe ask the city council if they have any specific recommendations they would like us to go forward with, and whether they would like us to be part of this heat funding shelter as it becomes more firm that that's a possibility. And I don't know if this is necessarily within our purview of the agenda item to do the work plan, but maybe discussing about things that we would like to recommend specifically to the city going forward, some things that we've talked about in the past meetings.
Well, I propose that we devise a plan that would allow us to actually implement the Housing First model, based on the Lead Me Home Plan. It's about forty-eight pages. I don't know if you all had a chance to read it or not, but I believe that model would bring us all together in terms of each community on the peninsula working together to devise a plan, you know? I don't believe that developing another shelter remedies the situation. I believe semi-permanent housing, transitional housing, supportive permanent housing better facilitates the needs of the peninsula, based on the homeless that are with mental disabilities. We could better support and facilitate them, those that need to help or hand up in terms of transitioning from homelessness. We can provide temporary housing for that population, but every community supplying support and funding to make it a collaborative effort, not just solely Seaside. That's what I propose. Devising a strategic plan to implement all the cities on the peninsula, more specific.
I think that's an excellent idea. And I think, so here's the tricky thing, is the homeless committee, I think we need to do a strategic plan that we can make a recommendation to the city council of Seaside specifically, that we do our part, but with that passion and energy in that, because I think that's fantastic.
We should do our part, but invite the surrounding cities to join us in a collaborative effort. Then we should be able to devise a plan, agree on the plan, take it to our city councils, have them agree on the plan, and share the funding, share the heat funds, establish, you know, transitional housing, permanent housing, to facilitate the needs of the homeless. That's what I propose.
So, a lot of ideas. I've gotten some of them down. Would it be okay if we have a study session for the next meeting to actually form or update our annual work plan? I think this was more of an introduction to it. We have some great ideas we can look through. I can tell you, you know, right now, we've accomplished pretty much three of the four items in that eighteen nineteen work plan. So, could we...
Hi, can I, yes.
Yeah, just, you know, I think, you know, take the ideas that were discussed tonight and refine them a bit...
Yeah.
So that we have something that I can actually put in the plan, and then maybe we can attach, similar to a strategic plan, attach some dates and some names that might go along with who might do that work.
Perfect. Do you guys have any recommendations? Okay.
Hey, that's good.
Excellent. Moving forward, I guess we're reports from committee members? I know that I attended the Jane Parker Supervisor meeting at the Community Foundation to discuss the heat fund, and there was a lot of really wonderful community input about how that money is going to be spent. There was the Veterans Transition Center was there, Gathering for Women was there, One Star Fish Parking, I think CHS was also there. And then the County of Monterey to kind of discuss their needs and how they're asking to help out the community. And I know I believe Miss Allen was there. And I'm looking forward to attending council member Pacheco and Wizards meeting. I think that'll be important. And I'd also like to mention that next Thursday at four thirty in the morning, there is a homeless count, and I believe because he's in the room, Mr. Perez might know a little bit about that. I don't mean to call you out.
You're referring to the point in time...
Yes, yes.
So, there's a little bit of a, bit of confusion. People think that's associated with the nationwide census count. It's totally separate. The importance of this count is, as the count in two thousand seventeen, is that the heat funding is going to be based on those numbers that they acquired in the two thousand seventeen count. And I have been told by different sources that there was actually an undercount. So, it's imperative that we get a lot of boots on the ground. So, I have been disseminating the information from ASR, the Applied Survey Research Group that's actually running this whole thing. And apparently, they did it in two thousand fifteen and two thousand seventeen, so they have the experience. And they have the people, the guides, they call them guides. And basically, there's two points of deployment, one in Salinas and one in Monterey. Well, the Monterey one is actually in Marina. And so, the people will gather there at four o'clock in the morning, and likewise, then the deployment center over in Salinas. And apparently, they're going to organize us into groups. There's a training session that unfortunately, the one in Salinas was on the twenty-first, but we have one tomorrow at one PM in Salinas, again at the Labor Council on Market Street. I sent out the flyer with the hope that others would disseminate that very same flyer. It's a PDF format, so they can download it and then send it out. But we're gearing up, and we're trying to get as many, as many people involved in this.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pacheco?
I think it's really important, the census, it's federal money, not heat money, because that's already been allocated. So, the census helps decide, and generally or indirectly, provides the numbers where they get federal money. I.e., the government shutdown impacts the dollars that are going to local communities for the homeless. So, I, it's important to understand that's, a lot of it's federal money, some of it's state, but the heat money's already been stated, said, here's twelve million, go spend it the best way you can. Just another little point for you, because I attended a leadership meeting when they made a vote, and you were talking about impact or not impact, and allocation of funds for housing, et cetera. To inclusive of shelters, there was a discussion of how we should divide the money. And that range was discussion of, and you're talking twenty people in the room, all with their own agendas, for lack of a better word. Discussion was from anywhere from fifty to sixty-five percent. Even, yeah, and Mayor Rubio, myself, and a few others, obviously the overseeing amount voted for the sixty-five percent because they agree with you. And I've heard that from you, when I went to that meeting, that housing was a priority. So, that needs to be understood. Also, understand that I believe, and this is, you might know more than I, but I'm going off the top of my head, which is scary, five percent is being allocated for youth. I think there's like ten percent of all Monterey Peninsula Unified School District children are directly or indirectly homeless. Another, I believe it's ten percent, is being used for, so I'm homeless, it's raining, you can make arrangements, like for a hotel to stay in because of the weather, ten percent of that money is going for that. I believe ten percent is going for like social services. So, that way, if you have a shelter, you need help in that shelter to roll it over. So, so the money was kind of divided in that way, and then I think five percent was obviously administrative cost. And out of the twelve million, two million goes to San Benito County. San Benito, and just as a thought, everybody, when everybody says, San Benito County has a really good plan, they're like light-years ahead of Monterey County. So, if you want to look and study that report, San Benito is supposed to be on the cutting edge of success. That's why they only need two million, and Monterey County needs ten million plus. So, they are way light-years ahead of the peninsula. So, just for some scale, but you did make an impact as far as a larger chunk of funds going for housing, and I just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Are there any other reports from staff? Or, sorry, from committee members? Yeah?
I did not attend, is that on? Okay. I did not attend the meeting that Supervisor Parker and Supervisor Advocat, but I did go to one in the morning out at Saint Mary's Church, and it was a presentation from Shelter Outreach Plus, which is now Community Homeless Solutions. Wonderful presentation on the ideas that they have for the future. And they, they cover transitional housing, they're putting women and men into a transitional housing thing. And they also were talking about tiny houses. Did Supervisor Parker mention that, tiny houses? It's a whole new concept. Anyway, it's something that's in the mill with Community Homeless Solutions, and it was a great presentation. It would be great for them to do it at another time for more people. There were people from Gathering, Place for Women and Men, all the different organizations. Okay? Welcome.
All right, then I guess that leads us to reports from staff, and that was good. Absolutely.
Counselor member Pacheco discussed a number of things that were brought up at yesterday's meeting I attended as well. So, all of the leadership council passed all of the changes to the RFP, and that was approved for, to be sent out. So, the timeline for the RFP is they're going to publish the notice on February fourth, and that will then be available, the NOFA would be available for that. And then, there'll be a mandatory bidders conference, so anybody that wants to put a proposal in needs to be present for that, and that'll be on February twenty-fifth. And then you'll have from that point forward, or March first to March thirty-first, to prepare your application. And all projects or applications are due on April first. And then they're going to do, sometime in mid-April, they will process, they'll have a committee to process which ones are going to move forward. And then there'll be negotiations in the May to June timeframe. So, as discussed a little bit earlier, if, only from what I was seeing, as Council Member Pacheco discussed, if sixty-five percent is going towards housing, that leaves about thirty-five percent for programs, service programs. And if, you know, maybe, you know, we do a parallel process, I don't know how involved this committee will be in the shelter project, but maybe we want to look at a program that we've had some interest in over the last year and put an application in for a program that we could roll out.
Thank you. Maybe we could agendize a discussion about that...
Okay.
At the next meeting about what we could come up with for a service program that we could either support or case managing is a wonderful opportunity going forward...
Sure.
For something like that. All right. Anything else from the committee members? I guess then we'll adjourn. Thank you very much. Welcome. Welcome.